Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, December 1st, December 7th. We'll start our regular meeting. Stand up and pledge allegiance to the Constitution. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. We'd like to have a moment of silence to honor our military, firefighters, road workers, and sheriff's deputies as they serve our community here in Rock. Thank you. Ms. Edwards, can we hear your roll call, please?
Trustee McLaughlin.
Present.
Trustee McGuire.
Present.
Trustee Mann.
Present.
Okay, so first thing is review and approval prior to meeting minutes. We have none, but we have an ongoing discussion about getting minutes done. As I said, the work session adds up just up to middle of November, November 17th. It came up to 41 hours and 1 minute of meeting minutes. It needs minutes made for. And I got a quote from transcript for 31-33. Now, I know it's going to deliver more on that because we would have more time. I mean, last week, last week was two hours. We'd have some more time on top of that, but you know, that's a good place to start. This needs to be done. You already passed a resolution to have to do it word for word, so we need to proceed with this. Can I go ahead and give this to these guys and get it done?
Point of order, Mr. President. This needs to be brought up in the business.
Okay, old business. We've requested to accept us a 2021 permanent budget. I gave my opinion on that. I'm not ready to vote on it. There's too many typos in the paperwork we were given, and we need to give them paperwork earlier than when the meeting starts, by several days a year. Bill, we used to do that. If we didn't do it, we got yelled at. But now, it's okay to give agendas and everything out as the meeting starts. So between those two things, I'm not ready to vote on that. So now, now we can do business. So now, when we do business, let's discuss the meeting minutes again. So we have a bid for, I think, about the last month and a half. If we do not to exceed $5,000, we should have enough money and everything to take care of it. And I'll try, and I'll start sending the recordings we have to them, and they start reducing the transcripts for us.
You're not going to clear this with legal before you're just going to move right ahead with it? Kind of contradictory what we discussed in the work session, Mr. McLaughlin.
They can do it 10 days, so once you send the Thangels' response, please, Steve.
All three of you will receive the email out and any response back. I'll ask Mr. Peterson to send you the emails direct, so everybody gets the same information.
Okay, so he says, so we're asking him just for what, Jim? What do you want from Steve, or from the Thangels?
Steve, you brought up a legal question on, well, number one, the opinion on whether or not you can grade your own minutes and attest to those. The second thing is whether or not the audio that's posted on the website is a legal record.
Isn't it so much easier if we just went back to the way we had it, voted on, and the way everybody else does it, and just do a short outline of the meeting minutes instead of having to do this word for word? It's so much more difficult. But, so you're saying, Steve's saying that we cannot, and I can understand that, so we can't read ourselves and say, this is what happened in the meeting. So we have to have somebody else look at the, so here's a copy of the first, of the transcript of the first meeting. Eighty-some pages. So somebody has to sit there, listen to the, listen to the recording, and read this and say, hey, that's good. Correct, is that right, Tracy? That's why you have to do that, or Jim, is that right?
And that's what you've asked me to go to Peterson and ask him.
Ask who to do that?
Right, what makes, what I said in the work session, what makes your minutes legal? There's no other way to really say it. In other words, what steps have to be followed to make your minutes legal?
Look, you can take a short version and do a one-page outline instead of doing the 88 pages. You can make a one-page outline and make that legal.
I don't know. Your legal counsel.
What do you do in place of township?
We have both types of minutes. We have long and short, but we don't depend on the video, or the, we don't depend on the recorded, the recording.
So who does your minutes?
Our fiscal officer. Tyson has a laptop sitting here typing them during the meeting, and then attest to them after the trustees vote on those minutes that the next.
It's word for word.
Sometimes it is, sometimes it is not.
What, sometimes, what's the majority of it?
Fifty-fifty, depending on the issue.
So that's her, here's a her's decision, the meeting's going on, to do it word for word or not?
It's trustee's decision. And that's adopted at the first of each year. At least, we have in my nine years as a trustee. We adopt the procedure, so there's no opinions that I like it this way, I like it that way, and then everything starts changing. You adopt it with your standards every, every January, and that's the way your minutes will be done all year long, unless you vote again to change it.
So how do you, at the beginning of the year, how do you do it fifty-fifty? So the first meeting of the month, we do it short, the second meeting of the month, we do it long?
No, topics in a meeting, a topic that may come up, someone addressed to us trustees, saying that it's a legal issue, then it's word by word. If it's something that's minor, then it's not. But it's all spelled out before you start the year. So there's no argument amongst you three elected officials about how it's done. That's what we do in our township. But I want you, as I said in the work session, you need to listen to the attorney about what he advises you.
Okay, so try and be transparent, but see what happens. Then we'll do business. Tracy, fiscal officer's report, please.
Okay, so you haven't even proposed the financial report. I just finished the, this is the first of the month. I just finished last month's bankrupt acceleat. I'll be getting those reports out. There have been invoices sitting in the mailbox since last week to be signed. I have a question on the, got another invoice for ComDuck, the printer that we still haven't used for like almost a year and a half. Has that printer been sent back yet?
No, it is not, because I need the trustee's approval and a way of paying for the shipment. It has to be shipped by one of their three shippers, and the cheapest price I've been able to find is $300. We're not allowed to ship it ourselves. So it's on my list, under my report, to ask trustees for the approval. And then how do I get it paid, since I don't have a credit card to pay for it? They asked for the credit card over the phone today, and of course, I don't have one that works. So I couldn't order the shipment last week, this week. So that, that was, that was on my report tonight.
So each time we're late, we just, we've already got a bill right here from last month. Another one, as long as we keep that computer, we keep getting paid $260 after pay month. So we're going to get another one, so we'll be behind, we'll be all for $520.
To address that issue, the vendor said if the, the item is shipped to them, they will negotiate or eliminate those invoices. So instead of being speculative, I want to be factual.
Well, I talked to them, and that's what they told me.
To take care of those invoices recently that the fiscal officer received, but I have to have a way of paying for the shipping.
You don't have to help.
Okay, so. We're ready to check?
Yes, if, if we had a check written to them before, but the shipping instructions weren't given to them, so they sent the money back. So I don't know why they decided to tell us we needed a credit card.
Under the current contract, trustees, it's a recentered, it's up to the individual party to ship the item at their expense back to their warehouse. I don't know about any money that was sent. But at this point, where you sit is, we have the machine in lockup, trunk wrapped, ready for shipment, have no way of paying for shipment from my position. And they're waiting on the equipment to cancel out the contract.
Do you have a name of the shipper?
It's not sitting on my desk, yes.
You have it in your hand.
That's it, that's it?
If you choose that shipper, I mean, we were trying to find, they gave me three choices. And so they would not come pick the item up without a payment. And I can't, as you know, employees can't cut checks.
Okay, so.
But you can't communicate to your fiscal officer how much you need a check? Put a hand to them when they get there?
The trustees have to approve that purchase.
They didn't approve it when you wrote it in the last thing, when you paid the bill, because I have that paperwork where you told me to send the payment.
They're a step off from the rookie program all the time without proper approval. And now you want to throw that out on paper? Let's, let's communicate who the check needs written to, how much is the, have the check written, how much I picked this thing up? Let's get it out here by the end of the year.
It's a bunch of excuses, and we're still paying an hour. We only owe $300 to ship, but we're going to pay a $500 bill because we're not shipping that.
You don't know that.
I do know what I called. I called for myself because you're not doing your job.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
I've been patiently waiting to figure out how to pay for this, and I don't know what to do.
My fact, Tracy, you can get a check, and when they show, pick it up, they have a check. Doesn't that work?
You have to approve it, and that's what's on my record to do tonight. So there's been no inaccuracies made stated.
They approve it, they approve it when they sign the check in the P O.
This is a contractual ending, and the attorney that the township hired to manage this case says that trustees have to vote on the expenditure.
They didn't, so we're in the two other contracts.
So let's vote on expenditures, we're not, not to exceed, exceed something or another, and so this thing happens.
And that's as simple as I was bringing up tonight on my report.
How much do you need, Steve? About to exceed what?
I would say $400, because again, it's a little over three, but.
Twenty-five.
If that's what you choose to do. Good. Do you need a fund code, Tracy, to want to take it out of?
Yes.
Okay, so trustees, let's look at the, for a report tonight that you adopted, or you were working on to adopt, and determine what fund code you're going to take it out of.
Officer, rise.
We have unencumbered balance under, I'll take you to that code.
344-110.
1,000, 1,10, 344, 5005. We have $493.21 unencumbered. So if you make a resolution of 490, that could be the account that it's taking out.
That's the first one I looked at, and I, I should, I'll look at the wrong paper. I'd see if it wasn't the wrong paper, too. Yep, that, that'll go right there. So we approve a shipping fee, not to, not to exceed $490, come out of 1,000, 110, 344, 5005. That's due on that?
Yes.
Yay, any A's? Passes, it happened.
Thank you, trustees. So Tracy, do you need a, a purchase order?
Yeah, the trustees, they have to sign a piece of paper.
Okay. Trustees, the purchase order will be in your mailbox tomorrow morning.
What's on mine?
And I'd like you to swing by and sign it for me.
So, there's, there's.
Anything else with your?
Yes, I'm not done. Last time we brought up about the membership and the clout, but there's no resolution. Do you guys want to join it? There's, there's an invoice for that I'm still holding. I don't know, you got to do a resolution and accept that if you want to do that. So I'm just putting that out on the table. Okay.
Anything with that? Was I going to have to mention this here?
Historically, let me explain a little bit why the trustees went to that membership when you had not been a seated trustee. They used to have memberships in some of the other organizations that turned out to not be effective. So trustees decided to join the clout when they lowered the attempt, the population base of the minimum requirement or the budget, and you qualified. What clout has is a full-time legal counsel working on bills with the state house legislators, lobbying for the larger townships or townships like Jefferson that have an urban country setting where you have urban city problems, just like a large township is. So you're getting representation, whether there's a convention or not, it's not really going to give you or take anything away from clout members, because they're still working with the state legislature as this Capitol building moves on. So you can join it again, or you can say you don't want to join it.
We left First Suburbs, which was a legal cities group. There wasn't much relevant township information. It was good to meet them, but not much information to be shared.
We'll sit out here. For the cloud. Or yes, I do.
It was tough getting in. I think we should stick with it.
How much is it, Steve?
Two hundred.
Tracy, what's on the invoice?
Two hundred.
Two hundred?
Mm-hmm.
And we'll stay with it, stay with it? What do you want, we're going to, stay with it?
Yeah.
Stay with it, then. You were fun doing protect you, Steve?
Yeah. Don't say that since you've taken a vote on it, and we've got to make sure we put it on the public record. Under 1,000, 120, 519, 0000. It's other dash dues and fees. You have an unencumbered amount of $1,392.12 in that account.
So before there's a resolution, it would have to be written ago with this. So I guess we have to do that the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So today is December 1st. By December 18th, we got to start shutting down, paying all the bills for the month, because I got to close out the budget for the fiscal year, and there's a lot of work that's got to be done. So on the 18th at noon, I'm going to not pay any more bills the rest of the year, so I need all the invoices into me that has to be paid by then. And then at that point, I got to shut, start, I'm working to close out, close out the system for 2020 and get ready for 21. Right now, we're behind a lot of invoices. I mean, everybody. It's with everything that's been going on, losing personnel and everything. Everybody's getting behind. They can't get their work done and get the bills paid. I can't get anybody to work with me long enough to work with them to get the bills paid. I need some, somebody to do something. I need something to be done, because we got to get this done. This is a bad time of the year to have this starting to happen.
Okay, so you're just making a record, did noon on December 18th, bill stopped?
So, and so what happens at that point if they're not in? Because we got a lot of backlog right now. Because I, you know, I'm not worried about the forwards. It's just behind that we have an issue with.
Okay, so I guess, Food Department and Fire Department, anything in the bill statement? Let's see, pen's moving, good.
So, so I mean, are we going to, is anybody going to do anything? Because I've been working for months, and it's not getting any better. I mean, you guys say, yeah, you see pens moving, but there's no action. It's just getting worse. It's not getting any better.
Promise, guys?
Yes.
Thank you.
Battalion Chief McGlaughlin.
No, 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 I'm not no fireman.
The battalion chief works every day on getting bills paid and working with Tracy. I don't know where she's coming from, that nobody's working with her.
I didn't stand up.
Uh, there was several bills today that was worked on with her.
Chief, do you know how many bills are behind? Did, did he share that with you? He might have worked several bills, but when you're 30, 20, and 30 bills behind, several bills aren't going to get you nowhere.
Can I bring him in?
Sure. Definitely.
You totally ain't no working bills, and you're pulling them away from them.
Tracy said we're several bills behind, and she mentioned the 30, 30 bills?
Yes.
I said, when you're 20, 30 bills behind, how can you catch up?
Well, several bills that I brought to your attention, there's not a P O for. It's not been created. We discussed that just a few minutes ago. Last year, it was created at the very end of the year, so I assume that's what happened on this one. The problem is, we have too many chefs in the kitchen, let's say. Chief McIntyre did bills his way. Chief Lutz did his. I did my tiny little pile. And now I am doing the work of three different people trying to pay bills. That's not in my, my realm. But I've taken it on. I find P Os that say we have this amount of money. I authorize her with my signature to please pay this bill. An email comes back and says, you don't have enough money in that. According to my side, it's there. According to hers, it's not. We have spent countless hours together. I had a day where she was in my office, I think, 10 hours. We had 22 interruptions. For me to try to do all of my little projects and to be trying to assist with these bills with the constant barrage of interruptions, I need double A batteries. I tore my uniform, got to go on a call. All the stuff that I've done in the past two and a half years pales in comparison to all the tasks that I have taken on since those two have left this department. I've tried, I've tried, her and I have tried many a times. It's just the checks and balances are not there. I've been trying to restructure the P Os, these spreadsheets, and all the invoices to streamline them. I would have P Os that had 11 entries of money being gone, and yet I only have seven receipts of where the money went. I'm not accusing anybody of investment. It's just the fact that, just like mine, every day here, how quickly I get pulled away from something. I find a P O that says $1,425 went by by. I have no receipt for it. I have no direction of where this went. My bottom line says I'm down that much. I call her, she gets on her side. There's no record of $1,425 being in that P O. Only thing I can think of, somebody got in there, and I'm again, not accusing anybody of any wrongdoing. Somebody got in there and started to pay this bill. Be doo, out the door we go, or whatever the distraction was, came back and put it in a different, well, unencumbered, a different line item, but never bothered to take the $1,425 out. It has been an absolute nightmare. But we are streamlining it, yes, we are a wee bit behind here. But again, I just, I got bills today that were from October that just arrived over. We've been trying to streamline this mail line here. The mail comes here, I'm not permitted to open it. Put it in an inter-office, interdepartmental envelope. Over it goes to Calumet. It gets recorded, it gets scanned, it gets stamped. It then gets sent to whoever it's supposed to go to. Goes to her, she then sends it to me. I authorize it, then I send it back over. The system's broken. We have been trying to alleviate this back and forth. Every vendor I get an envelope, I contact them and say, stop with one business partner. Jefferson Township Fire Department, Attention Fiscal Officer, 5A Calumet, number A, Dayton, Ohio 4541. I have been straightening this up with every vendor, as you cannot imagine. Today, I just saved us $200 because we got an invoice for ladder testing. Had no idea where to go with it. Looked into last year's, found it. These people charge us over 200 more for 16 feet less of ladders than what we had last year. I contacted them, got it straightened up. There's $200 for you sitting in the pile. Earlier this year, I renegotiated waste management. Cut your trash bill here in half, because no one bothered to negotiate a new price for the last four or five years, I said. Let me just not overdo it. So folks, I am really, really trying here. I know it's frustrating for her, it's frustrating for me. I've been in contact with the vendors, explaining the situation. They've been very patient, and they understand. But I told them, we will be caught up before the end of the year. And I know she's got this December 18, this December 18 deadline. And we're going to work, we're going to work, we're going to get it done. This is what we have been experiencing for the last 60, 90 days. So it has been a work in progress, but I see a light at the end of the tunnel. Any questions?
Thank you two very much for your effort. Something needs changed. I understand the idea of too many cooks in the kitchen. But there's a, my, my work experience is a process, is a P O process that we need to abide to first of year and make sure that happens for every purchase, so we control our money.
We've got some ideas in place to have 2021 be a little quicker.
Let's work together, work together and get a definite process. This is how you spend money. So there's no half-ads and buts. It goes through this process.
Well, I will tell you this, Mr. Wolf. Well, I will tell you this, Mr. Wolf, kindly has pulled HR off of me. The amount of time I have spent, HR, applications, interviewing, drug screening, HR IT day. I have, I want to week, I lost two days with three people, full days, doing nothing but HR paperwork, I9s, WT, W4s, IIT4s, all the paperwork, beneficiaries, emergency contacts, all the stuff. You can't imagine how long that takes. Then you go get them, get them in their uniform, get them in their bunker gear, get their phones turned into pagers. One entire day is lost per new employee. I've been lucky, I've been able to schedule a couple of them, two and three at a time, to knock it off. But Mr. Wolf has pulled that back for me and then put that back to the two HR. So I have, all the files that I had that was pending in works are back in Mr. Jones's hands, and so that she's going to handle that side, and pretty much I'll hand out applications and be part of the interview to me. Thank you, Mr. Wolf, for that. That's, that's been a.
Trustees, I make a motion, we reassign Adrian Jones to fire to dig out this administrative situation and support the fire for the next sixty days.
In what aspect of fire? Is HR, you mean?
Mr. Wilcox is asking for help.
Yes.
No, sir, it's, it's already gone. Mr. Wolf took it, I have delivered everything, it is out of my hands now. So there's, her files are straight wood, I've gone.
What I'm talking about is for help you with invoices.
So we do it.
The HR.
The HR.
Yeah, when I got here and hired four years ago, all the HR files were kept separate in each department. And that's. And you asked me who's handling. So we went to legal counsel, said, how do we pull this together? And they couldn't believe that you were handling HR by three different departments and records were kept in the same place. So we, this is a result of heading that direction. By moving the, the HR out of fire, it will relieve Mr. Wilcox of a lot of the work that he just reiterated. Adrian has the capacity, because you took the minutes from her responsibilities a year ago. So now the HR director will have all files under key in one place. So our accuracy with paperwork will improve because of it. So whether you assign her to help the fire department on other things, that's your option. And we might be able to have some room in her schedule to do so, to help them. But that's up to you trustees to decide.
She's already doing the HRs, it's good.
Well, it's up to you trustees.
So you don't want to do many help on the bills?
Too many chefs, too many cooks, too many cooks in the kitchen. Everybody needs to take care of the bills.